Right after the someone?
Ladies and gentlemen, the State of the Union, so the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you to thank you for the grace and mercy extended unto us every day. We thank you for your blood and your son that covers us and washes away our sins. We thank you for the north of your Holy Spirit, which is leading God us to all truth. Father, we pray tonight that this meeting be done decently and in order, but most of all, the decisions be made for the betterment of the city of Toluca. We come against every principle and power that would seek to exceed its minds and ask that it flourish. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Scott here.
Houston.
Here.
Harris.
Day.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Okay, number four, comments don't need agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment. And this is just a comment to, for the record, we have a city ordinance that we have on books, and according to the law, you should be able to move meetings from one date to another date. The law is set, and that law should be abided by according to the city ordinance that we have set for public meetings.
Any comments?
Well, I have a comment. I have given you guys a copy of ordinance, a revised amendment to an ordinance that was given in the council meeting on Thursday at our last meeting, and that ordinance was supposed to be presented to the newspaper to run. I received communication from Ms. Lewis, Mayor's Assistant, also from Mr. Odom later, saying he made a big mistake by not running that ordinance, amended ordinance in the paper. And as a councilperson, I really think it was deliberate, so we wouldn't have discussions on it tonight. So now it's been pushed off to July 10th. And we also violated the process for ordinance to be introduced when we published the ordinance for amending the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five, and also publishing, introducing of the ordinance for twenty-five, twenty-six. So that was a violation of the law. We published one ordinance to some, and then we did not publish in the correct time ordinance that was actually introduced the right way when it comes to law. So I want there to be a matter of record that the introduction or the publishing of an ordinance that was presented to the council was not published according to law. But we actually published an ordinance before it was introduced was a violation of the law.
Timothy, is the ordinance that you mocked up and sent to me is not in the paper today?
No, no, no. It's supposed to be last week. It's supposed to run this week. It was supposed to run when I gave it to you that Thursday. It's supposed to air that weekend. It was not in the paper.
Was the meeting last week?
No, week before last. It was supposed to be running last week in the paper. And that's why we're not discussing it tonight.
Okay, any comments? Number five, approve amendments of the June 12, twenty twenty-five regulations. Do you have a motion in your mouth?
Well, I want to make a correction to item number five, that needs to be added. Where it says, Councilman Wells also made comments concerning the lack of an audit on Madison Point, and where it said the motion carried, second by Ms. Houston, carried unanimously. I also asked the attorney, has she written the letter? I want that to be a matter of record. I asked the attorney, has she written the letter to Archie Jones, who oversees Madison Point? And she stated that it was written, but had been mailed. And so right now, we're currently, after the audit was introduced in February, we're like about three months behind on contacting Madison Point and their management in regards to expenditures of tax properties, equity properties that the city of Toluca has ownership in. So that has been mailed yet?
No.
So the council and the mayor directed the city attorney to write a letter and to send it to Archie Jones. That has not happened. She stated after the meeting on Thursday that she'd give me a copy, give the council a copy of it Friday or Monday, and we're two weeks ago into the meeting, and instead of not happening. So where does the city council go from there?
Attorney, would you like to respond to that?
I'll be happy to send the letter to the council to review, to send out whenever I complete it.
Okay.
It's in draft form. That's the answer.
Okay, it's been in draft form.
And I'm happy to do that this week, Councilman Wells.
But we both are people of our word. The last time we spoke, the last council meeting, you said you already written this.
Yes, I have.
And you said, and I was waiting to mail it. And I said, when can I get a copy of it? You said that I would give it to you Friday or Monday.
Councilman, if you'll review the communication between the council and me, there were about twenty appended documents to that. I reviewed those documents. I drafted the letter. I'll send it to you for review for tomorrow if you'd like.
Again, my concern is this.
You can repeat the same concern.
See, I let you talk, I'm gonna interrupt you. So can I speak? So can I speak?
And over again.
I let you talk. If you all want to talk about your statement, Justin, I can interrupt you. Now, my concern is, okay, you stated the last meeting, I drafted the letter, and I'll give you a copy. I asked, when will I be, the council is receiving a copy. You said, I'll send it to you Friday or Monday. That's been two weeks ago. Still has not happened. Also, you stated that you're gonna draft a letter to send to the Attorney General in regards to investigative audits that you're gonna do. You said that the first time we did it, it was, you was gonna court ask the Attorney General, did the process we implemented was the right process? You came back then later and said, well, I decided not to write the letter. I'm gonna go with what the city attorney said at that time and the district attorney. So when are we gonna ever get follow through when it comes to a concern that I have, just like we've been adamant about getting these concerns, Magnolia, and I'm gonna handle this comes to the water issue?
Councilman Wells, as to concerns that you have, I think I was the one who notified the city and reminded the city to run the ordinance that you requested be run in the paper. Isn't that correct?
Well, you sent an email out.
To you and to the city.
What I'm saying, you sent an email out, but Mr. Odom and the mayor and Ms. Lewis, they are very aware of the process. So did you send him a letter telling him, or email telling him to put the published ordinance for amending the budget and to send a new one for adopting twenty-five, twenty-six?
I regularly send when my.
No, no, okay. Okay, my question again. Just answer my question, please.
No.
Did you send a letter to them? And you say you sent an email to?
I sent an email to remind them to run your ordinance in the paper.
Okay, so did you send an email?
So I reject your statement that you made, that I don't take care of requests that you make.
No, I said, you have written letters that I asked you. I asked you to send a letter about running the ordinance. So I'm saying that you had to send a letter to tell him to publish the amended ordinance and the new ordinance for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I don't recall asking him to publish an ordinance.
Right, okay, so then.
But that doesn't mean that I didn't. I just don't recall, Councilman Wells.
You didn't. You said that you did. He sent that on his own. What I'm saying, he did it on his own. So, and that was a violation, I said at the last meeting.
Oh, you mean the last publication?
Yes.
That was in a.
When he issued it too early, yes.
Yeah, and I also noted that that publication should have come after it was introduced to the meeting. Now, we've already established that.
What I'm pointing out, Megan, is this. You didn't have to tell him to publish the budget ordinance. So there shouldn't have been a need to remind him to publish my ordinance with the current. That's all I'm saying.
Still on number five.
So how soon are we gonna get this letter sent to the, we told them we have a financial situation going on. So how soon are we gonna get information from Madison Point that they have been audited in six years? And they've sold tax credits for six years. So when are we gonna get the finances from those transactions that can actually get the city of Toluca money? There's only nine compliance that they've not been audited in six years. So when are we gonna get that stuff rolling? Because we should be filing charges, filing lawsuits. Somebody can answer.
Should it come after we get the other picks, the, what you've been talking about?
See, that should have been happened. The first time, they didn't report the audit, which you all know, since I've been here. They haven't been audited four years prior to me getting here. So now we in year six, they still have not audited, have not turned over information, and you are not asking for it. So when are we gonna be aggressive to actually get funds back to Toluca?
I don't mind asking and looking into it and seeing what I can find out.
All right. Okay, I'm done with that.
Motion that the minutes be approved and that's a third correction?
I second.
The motion, I mean, to.
Day motion.
Houston, second.
Okay, number six, presentation by Mr. Anthony Rollins and Mr. Robert Coleman for potential purchase of the Coca-Cola building. They came from Dallas and come on up. They can speak and then the council.
All right, well, my name is Robert Coleman. My parents, my grandparents, on both sides, was raised, and they're native Toluacans, all right. So my background is electrical, construction work, building anything from the ground up, AC, plumbing, the whole nine yards. But we're basically here today, right here, to request a purchase of that seven oh one green. That's what we're here to do right here.
Get a look, I have on that, what you're gonna do to deal with the town if you get it.
My name is Anthony Rollins. I'm sure most of you guys know me. So our plan for the seven oh one green street is to make it a physical asset center. Our customers are in telecom business. They, we go in and design facilities, and then we bring in customers. You guys have a lot of enabled fiber and stuff around here, and we see a market to bring, bring it indoors and expand, cover the city better, cover a couple of areas outside of here, too. So that's probably looking to purchase. I'm a general contractor, electrician. We do our own buildings, and so to us, we can control cost factors on the building as far as making it back up to where it needs to be, something for the city to look at, and something for them to be proud of.
Well, we have to have an appraisal on the building, and you've seen that it's condition. So this is the first step. Something needs to do with it. If it's on, it's just gonna collapse. So, councilman, anything?
My concern, do you guys have a proposal that you all will present to the council?
Once, once we know that you all have potential to sell this building.
Okay.
I'm not sure, don't make sense for me to show you everything, and you guys tell me.
What I'm saying is have something right.
Well, that is the first thing. And that's why the conversation is kind of vague. We don't have a commitment. We hit a commitment. We can set more, let's say, physical asset center. That's what we're gonna have, we're gonna asset in mind.
Well, this is a question. If you get an appraisal, you'll contact you and then go see where we go from there.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Yeah, Mr. Rollins, are there any other buildings that you looked around, that you put around town, surveyed, got interested? And I'm sure, I know what you're talking about as far as the coverage, you're looking at the asset center. Have you looked at the building near the community center that the city has that's already ready and available?
For, for what we're looking forward for, that is the best property. And Mayor, we don't, we've talked to them about why. We have reasons why that one. And if you know about the fiber, you know why that one's a good one.
The reason I have a question here is because the Coca-Cola building is a historical building, and it has historical tax credits there, and it's a great asset to the city. And the city selling the asset that has tremendous value will be, in my opinion, that the city will be selling themselves short of that. Now, on eighty, and I do want you, Mr. Rollins, please don't take offense to what I'm saying here, but straight up and down eighty, we have available land and things that could be developed, but to take an asset that the city has that's historical, not only is it historical, but if you go to Atlanta, Georgia, and you go to the Coca-Cola museum, in the Coca-Cola museum, they have, they talk about the first bottling companies in that museum. In that museum, Toluca is the first one right there in that museum. And most of you that haven't been to that museum, we're actually, you know, showcased in that museum as one of the first Coca-Cola bottling companies. And this is just my opinion, and to just give that asset away, or even though it's in a dilapidated stage, it's pathetic.
So I guess, my question would be, do you have plans for it? Does anybody here have plans for it?
Well, I think the next leader would have great plans for it.
Okay, do you have the funds?
I think the great, the next leader that could possibly have get funds for it.
Yes, sir. You recognize this. Yes, I was just saying, too, here for the Coca-Cola plant.
Excuse me. Guys, can you all silence your phones?
Please do, please.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, yeah, we got plans for it. Right now, I had talked to Mr. Rollins, and that's what we're gonna get together on that. He has plans in whatever they plan to do, but I have plans as well. And I've already secured the grants, securing pretty much the grant for it, and some of the layout for some of the things, too, to include this whole section here where the Coca-Cola plant, where Mr. Dew and the other person, I mean, that other, what is that, that other little facility there, the post office, where Mr. Harris is now building, that whole entire block. But we've looked at and pretty much secured, and I've started trying to make, to contact with the Beadhorn family, because I've worked with them before as well. So, yeah, that's something. And all of that is in here, from the buildings to the proposals, to pictures how we'll, you know, and then, too, it's gonna incorporate, too, the H and H building, which is gonna be also set up for STEM research, for STEM for the children, and there's various ages and splash pads, and just a lot of different things for that whole section around there that's been planned.
The H and H building here.
Part of the H and H building here. Yeah, but I know that you all have plans for that. But it's a lot of the diagrams, pictures, a lot of things have already been done. So, yeah, even in the inside of the building. So, but that's the thing about it. I don't wanna take that, because we could always partner with that if that's what y'all decide to do. But my thing is that the reason I didn't come to the board, meaning the council before, was because I want to make sure that I had something secure, I have the grant writers, I don't, you know, and that's the thing about it. I have the grant writers, you know, we know which grants, you know, like you said, the historical grants and those things that we will apply for. There's many other things that we can apply for in order to get it. And it's the thing about it, whether we partner with the city of Toluca, all of us, you know what I'm saying, the three of us, or just the two of you, all of us feeling, I've already copyrighted and put my, you know, watermark or trademark or whatever you call it, this right here. So, but that's something that we can just talk about. So, yeah, I've taken care of this, too. And it just shows it's a cafe, everything that's gonna be in that area.
Tell us about some of the things that our business would bring to the town. So we're bringing TI, IT, jobs, training, opportunities. I mean, it's the future. And I think it would put Toluca in a good position to move forward into the future, especially in the rural area. To have something like this that would possibly even bring others investors into this area, knowing that you have this kind of infrastructure.
Hey, hey, the next phone go off, you gonna be asked to move. Leave out of here. I don't care who you are. Excuse me for interrupting, sir. I mean, it's just the law, man.
May I see some of them, sir? Okay. No, the thing about it, too, is that, like you said, it's a lot of IT stuff, because Jimmy Carter and myself, we've also looked, like you said, state of the art, all of that stuff. It's gonna include the Indian Mountains, we're gonna include the plantation homes. It will even have the ballot milk as bin. It will have a lot of different things, too, trampoline things in there for the kids. It's various ages, because we don't have much for the kids here. So, but for STEM, and it'll, you know, also, it'll bring in revenue, because they could come in and actually have, what you call the outings and stuff. Y'all gotta forgive me, because I pay a.
Field trips.
Yeah, the field trips and everything else. So I have some work on the property, because I'm a COVID. But anyway, but those are some of the things that, too, that we can do. But it's gonna highlight, like the first, like the Delta Airlines crop dusters, it's also the old Delta Village scene. It has a lot of things, even with the aquarium, because I had looked at the post office, it's always something going on with water down there. But there's different things that you could do with that to make it, you know, a better environment and possibly some aquariums for the kids. So it's a lot of thought. And then, too, all of the, where's the part with all the grants? It's already in here. I'm gonna just say, because all the Chicago Mill is in there, too, with the crevices of wood, the cons being something out at mound, that's the Monday maker of a con. You know, Hermione Museum is in there, it's gonna expand. The tourism system, I mean, the tourism thing will also expand. But that's the heritage part there with the Indian Mountains, there to Alana, Toluca Airport and the crop duster.
Ms. Darrow, we may have to get you to request to be on the agenda to do your presentation.
Well, don't just say it. It's just, it's here. But I wanna work with them, because I want them to have what they want, and I want this to go together, too. I don't wanna take none of my.
Hit with us, and make sure we're a little bit on rest, play the things going.
But I've already scheduled something. I had scheduled something with the Beadhorns, you know, at the Beadhorn Museum, and to talk with them, because we've worked, our families have worked together, and I've actually had some of them as patients, even Mr. Jones of Beadhorn, one of the ones before he passed away a long time ago, and also moved into one of the homes, when I lived in Monroe, of one of the, you know, savers.
Thank you for the presentation.
Any comments? Okay, sound of a firm resolution adopting twenty twenty-five, fair housing, common access.
So this is actually something that we do every year in conjunction with the LCDDG grant programs. We normally do it in April. We're doing it this year in July, just to do something different, because the summertime is a big time when people move. So we're gonna have some articles in the paper for kids going off to college for the first time, or college graduates moving into housing, just to let them know about discrimination practices. So it's something that we do for LCDDG, we do it every year.
Also, tell, please. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, approve a contract with Mecanolio Water Service for sharing the customer information.
So, Ms. Gray, this is the same one that we talked about, around here, for two hundred thousand.
You have, you have two contracts, that's correct.
Yeah, she write a letter to the Attorney General or somebody writes.
So the city would have to direct me to write that letter?
I don't.
And that's not to the Attorney General.
That's a cool with me.
The Attorney, the Attorney General wouldn't have anything to do with that contract.
That's a cool with me.
So Magnolia is in a relationship with the state, okay? Right, Magnolia's in a relationship with the state. And what Judge Dwyer had asked or was that the city put some pressure on the relationship between Magnolia and the city to provide that information at no cost? I have not been directed to do that by the city. I have not. That was a question from the audience. The city has not directed me to do that.
We need to, as, as done.
So Mayor, you had a councilman, Ms. Day, made the comment, could we ask them to provide their service to us for free? They can't, they can't. You had a councilmember that made the suggestion to the attorney, as they did, to ask Magnolia, could they provide their service to us as an in-kind service? Attorney Gray said, the city directed her to do it. And we all did not approve the contract, because that was supposed to be action that we were gonna take. That was a council recommendation. So are we not gonna follow what the council says and do our own thing? Because we're supposed to be the decision makers for the city. So Ms. Day made the motion, we decided not to pass the contract, to approve the contracts, because you all were supposed to have the attorney to ask Magnolia, will they provide us an in-kind service? So we just gonna do that?
Hey, have you contacted?
She said she has not been directed by the city, which means she is not.
I'm happy to contact Magnolia. I could step out and ask their council now. The city wants to direct me to call and do that. I suggest and expect that the answer's gonna be no, but I'm happy to ask.
First of all, the issue was not supposed to be on the agenda, unless, because it was voted on and was voted down by the council. It was not supposed to be put back on the agenda. It's a step in the process that's supposed to go into place in order to bring an item that's been voted on by a council back on the agenda. It's not just placed back on the agenda. We should know that.
No, I can have a conversation with you about that, if that's your question.
I have no question. What I'm saying is, I'm gonna make a statement. In order for it to be back on the agenda, there was gonna be a process done by the council, not you just putting it back on the agenda. Because we voted on that issue, and we said no. So in order for it to come back, there's a legal process that was supposed to happen by the council, and not just you putting it on the agenda. We gotta do stuff like law, like tell us play alongs.
So the appropriate way to address the matter, the safest way to address the matter, would be for a person who voted the contract down to make a motion to reconsider, which would have to be seconded. And then that would be voted on, and if it's gonna be reconsidered, it will be reconsidered. And that may be done in the same meeting, or something. And that may be done in the same meeting, or something is voted down, or the meeting immediately subsequent there too, which this would be. Now, I will tell you that the status of the law on this issue, depending on who you speak to, is this. If you do not vote for the council to affirmatively take action, there are opinions that you can have that put on the agenda again, as many times as you like, as long as an affirmative step isn't being voted on by the council. Now, again, I would say that it's my opinion, and that the safest thing to do, to have the matter back on the agenda and discussed again, would be for one of the council members who voted against the contract being executed, would make a motion to reconsider, followed by a second, and then a vote. And if the vote isn't affirmative to reconsider, it may be reconsidered at this meeting, and that's lawful.
No, you, you can only reconsider at the same meeting.
That's incorrect.
Hold on, let me finish. According to law, you can only reconsider at the same meeting or continuation of that meeting that lasts for a period of sessions. Now, now, what's supposed to happen after the meeting closes, no reconsideration is done, you have to come back and rescind it.
It's incorrect.
Robert rules the order, look it up.
You're incorrect. And so, a council member wants to make a motion to reconsider?
You cannot, you have to reconsider, you have to reconsider the same day you take action.
It's incorrect.
That's not incorrect, I looked up and pointed it up right here. It said reconsider a motion and enable a majority in the assembly within a limited time, and without notice, to bring back for further consideration a motion that has already been voted on. And it says limited time, which means we have to do that before that meeting ends. Or if, on the way, if you gotta do it before the meeting end, it has to be a continuation of that meeting. Now, because the meeting ended and we voted to not approve the contract, in order for it to come back, you have to rescind the action that was taken at the last league council meeting. Rescind means to undo what was already done.
You've all heard my opinion.
And I give you law, opinion is not law.
Reconsider laws, you have something else to say other than that little portion there?
Is incorrect.
Well, I'm hoping to rescind and to put it back on the agenda.
You, you can't motion to rescind it in the meeting now. You cannot do it. You, you cannot do anything, it's all on the agenda. That's wrong, you cannot do it. No, the, the law states, in order to rescind, it has to be an item on the agenda. It has to be on the agenda to rescind. The agenda item has clearly stated to rescind.
No, it's to reconsider.
That's not, that's not law, that's not law, so I've been telling us the law is about not following the law. And the attorney is giving bad advice. We should reconsider, it has to happen within a limited time. Can you pull that law up?
I just gave you my.
You give me your opinion.
I'm not arguing with you. Everybody on the council, you've heard, you've heard my legal opinion, it's a motion to reconsider.
It was Robert rules of order stating the concept of repeal and rescind and reconsider, okay? Rescind an motion that was previously adopted means you have to strike out an entire main motion. And it has to be an agenda item. You can't have an agenda item to vote to approve a contract. You can't do that and say, I wanna rescind the last vote. You gotta spell that out on the agenda within twenty-four hours. You just can't do that in the meeting. That has to be an agenda item. Mayor, mayor, point of order. Point of order. Can we research to see if you can rescind an item on the agenda that was voted on the previous meeting? A point of order, that mean everything is stopped, so we gotta get that answer.
He has a motion and a second.
No, I, I ask for a point of order, which means, a point of order means you have to stop everything and give us a direct definitive answer, not an opinion. Now, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be a matter of record, okay? A matter of record. You cannot, Mr. Odom, what makes you write this, okay? Mr. Odom, I'm making this a matter of record, I inquire for a point of order to be done in regards to item number eight and the motion to rescind. So, I want that to be input into the minutes that I requested a point of order from the attorney and the mayor to give a definitive answer, because you're not voting. See, you have to vote now to make a motion to add an item to the agenda to rescind the action that was taken.
Again, um, I have advised that you may make a motion to reconsider. I'm not using the word rescind, a motion to reconsider.
I, 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 I made as a council member, okay? So, as, but I make a motion, but what does point of order mean?
Councilman, we have a motion. And it needs to be voted on.
I, no, I, I call for a point of order.
After a motion and a second.
Point of order overrules everything.
The council was in discussion.
The point of order overrules everything.
And I'm also not arguing with the audience.
By law, by law. And another thing, before you, before you go on anything, I got a question. Cause I already made, I made a motion, I asked for a point of order from the attorney. She refused, I want there to be a matter of record. She refused to address, and the mayor refused to address the point of order request. I want there to be records. She refused to address, now, I also have.
Listen, I first, okay?
My concern. Uh, my concern is this. When we voted on this, when y'all voted for the receivership, okay? You all touted that it's supposed to be a partnership between the city of Tallulah and the state of Louisiana. And when I look at a partnership, that mean both parties receive something on a partnership. So, you mean to tell me, we can't ask them to give us a service as in kind for something, they already give all our money, okay? We, you just wrote a letter, you voted, somebody wrote a letter, I'm who voted? That state, we have been fighting, we have financial distress. So, now you proposing a contract where you wanna pay them two hundred dollars, then to cut somebody's stuff off, you gonna pay them fifty dollars to cut it off? Fifty dollars to reconnect, then we charge a fee for it. So, now, my, my concern, let me finish. So, my concern is, I, I, I'm talking. So, my concern is, if there's a partnership, when do we get anything from this partnership? Mr. Odom asked me a question, and I know the receivership, I don't know why you got that on here, that the sewer funds is not by the city's financial truck. No, 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 what I'm saying is, we, we wrote a letter and posted the same thing because of sewer funds. See, that's why I asked, for so long, y'all said the finances were great, everything was great.
Until we were into receivership.
Right, that's not how the thing happened, okay? So, the end of the fifth year, according to our audit, say we had one point nine million dollars to be used at the city's discretion. So, if we use that one point nine million dollars up.
We need right there, not quite that much.
That was, that was in our audit.
And also, when we had our committee meeting, I, I showed you all, all the money the city had. I explained it to you, and you seemed to accept it.
No, I did not, I did not. I told Mr. Smith, oh, this incomplete. I said, I wanna see all the finances that the city had, you never gave it to us, you went to the back, followed the papers, to the point where we left. And wait on you to call us back, who helped you with the buzzer, we're gonna get to that later. But my concern is, we got monies that we've been missing from Madison Point, money comes to the houses. And there's no direct action to compel them to give us anything. I also, I also came before this council, and you, and you, and said, we have contracts that are out for those street projects that one of us two hundred and some days past due. And I said, guys, we can consume damages from this company from not being, you told me, I'm not gonna ask them for anything. I'm not gonna give no money, I wanna maintain a good relationship with them. I'm going to finance, so if, if, we're in a partnership.
Can you please instruct Councilman Wells not to speak about things spoken of in a decade's time?
I, I don't say about a decade's time, you did.
I just, I just said.
The point is, I don't say about a decade's time. What I said was, I said, I, I've came to the council in the meetings. I was gonna talk about the issue. So, now, when we look at this, okay? You said, trying to vote on them, get them money, so it's a partnership, we get a partnership. When are we gonna ever ask Magnolia to give us anything?
It's only two hundred dollars to get the bill.
You said, we finance the stress, we probably have official administrative court to go now. So, we got two hundred dollars to give away or what?
Two hundred, two dollars for one.
Two hundred dollars. So, so, we, we got enough money to do that.
Mayor, so this, this is the procedural status. You have a, a motion and a second, and Councilman Wells made a point of order. Which is where he's requesting a procedural ruling. And, and I've advised that procedurally, it's acceptable for you to vote on the motion to reconsider. You as, you as, as the person presiding over the meeting can, can decline the point of order.
He cannot decline a point of order, he cannot do that.
And, and move forward with the election. Once he's been advised.
One more thing, he, he cannot decline.
Are you dismining?
He cannot decline a point of order, you cannot do that.
Once he's been advised, he may so do.
He cannot decline a point of order. You, you can advise him, you, you tell him by the law. Show me what say he can decline a point of order in Robert rules of order. Show me involuntary procedure where he can decline a point of order, show it to me.
Well, Councilman Wells, I bought a copy of Robert's rules of order with me.
Okay, the attorney's office, that's what attorney's office had.
Again, Mayor?
Show me involuntary, show me involuntary procedure, as, as a city attorney, I'm not arguing either. As a city attorney, it says in voluntary procedure, the mayor can not act upon a point of order.
He's, he's, what are you talking about, not acting on?
He cannot, you can't, you can't tell him.
Once he's, once he's advised.
But point of order is this, let me clear it up. Point of order is when a board member that serves on, on board. Asking, he, I'm trying to clear a question for, for the audience. So, a point of order, it stops everything. And the point of order states that whatever issue's been addressed, it has to be answered. It has to be answered.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You cannot tell him, he can deny a point of order.
You have to go to the law.
Thank you for clarifying that, I answered.
You cannot, he has to answer a point of order. But now, I'm sure you saw, now, you, you are very adamant about making sure Magnolia get what they want. You, you, you told the city that they had to give Magnolia nine hundred to the eighty thousand dollars in one night. Because of fact that. No, no, we gave away a million dollars almost in one night, because the attorney said, I recommend y'all pay him nine hundred dollars by December thirteenth.
No, you, you better do this council to pay that.
I, I don't know. Because you advised them. You advised them to settle that debt for nine hundred, eight thousand. Now, you advise them to pay these people that amount of money. You're always advising us to pay money, but you never advise us steps where we can get money. That's disturbing to me, as a city attorney. Mr. Odom, did you put in there, I asked for a point of order, and the attorney, Ms. Pala Gray, stated that the mayor can deny a point of order, I want that in the minutes, because I'm gonna write that up, because you cannot do that.
Mr. Odom.
I'm gonna write that.
Okay, look, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna have a screaming match with everybody. Here, here's what's happened. You have a motion, and there was a second. You made a point of order, which, which is to ask for a procedural ruling, and I've given him the procedure to follow.
The procedure rule is not to tell the mayor he can deny a point of order.
That's not what's happening.
So, I want you to make sure you put in there that the attorney, Ms. Pala Gray, advised the mayor to deny a point of order. And I want that.
Mayor, my advice, my advice is simply this, after the point of order, here's my advice. You can have a motion to reconsider on this issue, and you have one, and you have a second, and it may be reconsidered. And then what you all do with that motion to reconsider is up to the council on that.
No, what, what we need to do, well, this is what the council need to start doing, okay? No, what we need to start doing is make sure we familiarize ourselves with Robert rules of order. The only thing we've taught you can reconsider a motion is at that particular meeting, or if it's continued to another meeting. This item was voted on by the council and voted down, that's an action that took place. So, what's supposed to happen now, you don't reconsider that action, cause it's been voted on. You have to rescind it or repeal the action that took place, not reconsider.
You got questions, sir? Yes, you do, that's, you break one of the laws, you don't hang.
Hey, 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 y'all.
He gets three minutes. And he can discuss in whatever, three, three minutes.
First of all, what the attorney just said didn't happen. Mr. Wells was in discussion. While he was in discussion, you had Councilwoman, Councilwoman Day and Councilwoman Houston call a motion. You can't call a motion in the middle of discussion. And the point of order is law, and you supposed to give an opinion on it, uh, attorney, and not go by what's, what you're saying. You, you never brought out a statute or anything, as an attorney, you never bring statutes out to the community and the council to show what your opinion may be. Your opinion is just your opinion, and so, and most, also times, opinion of law.
And I'm sure you're giving the wrong advice, okay? It's a matter of record, I'm gonna tell you all careful what y'all do. It says on the Robert rules of order, number thirty-seven, code three. It says the motion to reconsider can generally be applied to a vote that either adopted or rejected a motion, and it proposes no specific change in a decision. That means it proposes no change in a decision, but simply that the original portion will be reopened. Got it? So, what you're telling me now is change a decision that has been already made. So, you can't make a motion to reconsider it. That's wrong. That's the law.
I was still talking, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't done. No, I wasn't done, Mr. Mayor. The, secondly, the, I'm trying to figure out, if we have sewer, we in such a crisis, what are we using our sewer money for? Because we shouldn't be using sewer funds.
We don't have any.
So, if we don't have sewer funds, what, what other funds that we supposed to be operating our, 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 um, our town with, where is that money?
We're trying to scrape it all up, some of the minimum.
Why are we so interested in, in the sewer money? And secondly, you collect, secondly, you collect garbage funds. And I'm, and I'm so glad the Mad President is here today, have the city, have the city. I already know the answer. The city has not been sending the funds over to the parish, parish that they're collecting. So, where is that fund? Where is that fund?
I, I, I can read out the law states, I wanna be very clear about. It says the motion to reconsider cannot be applied to a front of vote whose provisions have been partly carried out. That mean we already decided not to approve the contract. So, you can't, hold on, man. Then it's called something to be done, it's impossible to undo. The second thing, the motion to reconsider is considered by the assembly immediately after it is made, or at some later time, depending on the parliamentary situation. It, it says at, at mid or at some later time, depending on the parliamentary situation. What that simply means is this, and the party gives you the, the number you go to. It says in order to reconsider it, it has to be done at a meeting that continues from the previous meeting. But if the meeting closes, but if the meeting closes, you can, it says in order to reconsider, the third thing. It says to the extent practical and with certain exceptions, to place the board, the assembly again, the question on which the vote has been reconsidered in the exact position it occupied the moment before it was voted on originally. So, you can't come back at another meeting and say, I wanna reconsider an item. You got a question about a young man back there. You got, you got a question from an audience member. See, the man trying to rush it, you got an audience here.
I got a question, I'm probably like one of the youngest people on the room. Is everybody educated on the law and everything that's coming? Okay, so like, before y'all have the meeting, do y'all actually look at what's supposed to go before y'all actually get up in here? I'm reading what I know, and I study, and I pass tests. I'm a barf, but at the same time, it's a lot of people that don't know nothing about this. And it look like y'all don't know nothing about this either. That's my only thing. We gotta work together. We gotta work together.
I just have one thing and I'm gonna be brave.
Okay. Number seven and eight. What should have happened was this shouldn't even be on the agenda. It should have been voted on, and it has to be a unanimous decision. Cause only the one that could bring it up was the one that voted for it in affirmative, which was Councilman Wells, Ms. Day, or Ms. Harris. None of them brought it up, it's just like when you wanna replace something on the agenda. It has to be a unanimous decision. If one of them wanna say, okay, let's put it back on the agenda, and it said, no, one said, no. It failed, so it shouldn't have been on their agenda, that's all I gotta say.
See, see, leave it, leave it, leave it. Okay, now she knows. What, 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 what we gonna know? Mayor, what we gonna know? What, what we gonna know? What item is gonna be voted? What is number eight, what we gonna know?
Number eight.
No, that, that's not we gonna know, that's not we gonna know. Ms. Day says she made a motion to rescind. Reconsider. That's not an item on the agenda. So now what's supposed to happen, you gotta have a motion to add the rescinding on the, I mean, the reconsider on the agenda.
Recisser now, you're voting on reconsider.
But you gotta add to the, it's not, it's not agenda item.
Attorney, what do we do now?
It matters.
So because it was, just, just happened at the last meeting, again, there's two schools of thought on this. I consulted with a municipal expert prior to this meeting on this issue, knew it would come up. There's.
Come on, Mister Wills.
Mayor.
Come on.
At any rate, there's two ways that this can happen, okay? I've been advised, though I don't think it's the safer route, that the mayor could actually put this contract back up on the agenda because we did not vote for the council to affirmatively do something. Just did not agree to sign the contract. There was no affirmative action for him to take after that meeting. I think that, excuse me, I think that the safer route, and the route that I advise you go is to have just the exact process that you follow. A motion to reconsider, followed by the second, and then you vote on it, the majority, and it, and it does not have to be unanimous. Okay, because it's a motion to reconsider. It has, either it has to happen in the meeting where the original action happened, or the subsequent meeting. But after that, you couldn't go the reconsideration route.
No.
Yes.
That is absolute, the only thing that you can bring back according to Rob rule and parliamentary procedure is the second contract. My God. And the only way you can bring the second contract up because it died.
I've advised, I've advised more strenuous.
No, no, you're fair, you're fair. No, no, she didn't, the attorney didn't know his advice. The only item that can be placed back on the agenda without rescinding is either the second contract. And the reason why you can do that, because there was no motion, no action taken on that item. It died due to a lack of a second. So you can put that back on the agenda and discuss it. But I'm telling you.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hurt some feelings here, Mayor. But you have not adopted Robert's rules of order.
Yes, we understand the procedure, you have adopted.
And, and under the Larson Act, you can do exactly what I've asked.
No, you cannot.
Now, we're gonna nail this.
See, again, that's totally wrong. Whether you formally adopt it or not, that's bad advice. See, whether you form, oh man, whether you formally adopt Rob rules of order or not, it's common practice that Rob rules of order is the parliamentary procedure that governs all meetings. And that's the law.
You'll, you'll find that, um, many municipalities even adopt their own rules. Instead of Robert.
No, 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 no.
I'll give you the city of Charleston, basically, people.
They utilize Robert rules of order, but they add to it. But, but Rob rules of order, but now this, I'll, I'll tell you something. She's getting wrong advice. Let me finish, let me finish. Okay, now. What she said was totally wrong. The only action you can take on this thing with number two. See, that, that's why we gotta know Rob rules of order, see, we supposed to know that as a council. So what you said was wrong. The only thing we can bring back without rescinding the action is number two, because it died for a lack of second. I got, I got it all, I got it all right here. Now, listen, listen, Rob rules of order. Now, when it comes to the first action, Attorney, I'm surprised that you gonna have this right. The first action, because we voted on it, she admitted a part of it. She said you can reconsider it when it happened, or you do it before that meeting closes. The only way you can discuss it at a subsequent meeting is if it's a continuation like a legislative meeting in Baton Rouge, or you have a series of days where you meet. But if the meeting ended that night, you can no longer reconsider the action.
You're a fraud.
You got that, Doc?
All right, now, let's, let's.
Can you give me some paper I got in front of you?
Tell them Larson.
The Larson Act is governed by Rob rules of order. And it tells you.
Attorney, now, where we are now, now sometimes fifteen years.
You try.
You're at RoCo.
You try.
You're at RoCo.
Listen, okay, oh, 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 this, this thing, this, this. No, no, man, Scott. Mister, I got a concern. Now, remember, remember when you said that, uh, no, oh, 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 we got a question. Remember when you said that I can add this to the general audit? You said it was not an agenda, right?
Okay.
I, I vote no. And also, my notice this. Because the, the reconsider is not an item on the agenda, which means we just violated the open meetings law. Cause there have to be a twenty-four hour notice that you can reconsider an action. And I can't believe you told them that. When you told me because it was not an item on the agenda for that forensic audit, even though we discussed the audit, you said because it's not an agenda item, we could not discuss it, it wasn't added. Now, you just told them they can make a motion to reconsider something without, let me finish. Without the reconsider being an item. No, I want to make this with your body.
Attorney, what, what do you know?
No, you provided the open meeting law. Mayor, Mister Oden, I want you to put in a minute, I'm writing this out.
I'm not sure how to vote.
We voted to re- reconsider an action that was not an agenda item. I would been on record. I can't believe you just told me that, I cannot believe it.
Sir, I, I don't know, Mayor, I, I couldn't hear everybody voting, it's come from Wells screaming at me here.
Cause he starts, he starts trying to rush stuff when you talk.
Three, two. It called, it passed, three, two. So now we.
Now, now you can, now you can discuss the contract.
You have to have a unanimous decision.
You, you can't, you can't.
Not, not on a motion.
You have to have.
You, you have to, you try to add.
Pam, the same.
How can you add an item to the agenda when the item have been added? No, you cannot do it.
We just, we just.
You, you supposed, you, you cannot, you have to add an item to the agenda, Attorney Gray, you gotta have a mo-, you gotta have a motion to reconsider that vote.
Mayor, I, I'm, I'm literally not gonna continue to stay here if they scream that by Councilman Wells.
Well, tell the right thing.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to either.
Does anybody have a copy of the Larson Act? Do you have a copy of the Larson Act, Mister Mayor?
Do what?
Do you have a copy of the Larson Act?
Uh, no.
And, and, that's not.
The reconsider, action is not on the agenda either.
You asked for a motion to do this?
No, you, see, listen, by law, Mayor, I'm trying to tell you by law. And I'm surprised Attorney Gray doesn't tell us to break the open meetings law. By law, we just voted to add rescinding, I mean reconsider, an action from the last meeting that's not on the agenda. So you have to first make a motion to add the reconsideration on the agenda. And it has to be a unanimous decision.
It has to.
And, you, you, cause you, you just add a whole item to the agenda.
Exactly.
You just add an item to the agenda.
Attorney, well, let's do it.
I'm telling you, you know what, uh, I believe you.
Okay, thank you.
I ain't gonna lie, I knew you gonna say that.
Hey, what are we doing?
You just add an item to the agenda. You just add a motion to reconsider something that's not on the agenda. That's a direct violation of the open meetings law.
That's right.
Send that over.
Hold, 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 there. No. What are we doing now?
Now we discuss the contract.
No, you can't.
And whether or not.
No, you can't.
And then we have to, you have to vote it again.
Okay, this is your turn.
No, we voted, we voted to reconsider.
You can discuss the contract.
And I'm, well, Mayor, what we just voted to reconsider? What we voted to reconsider?
Look on your.
No, no, what we, it's, it's, it's not on here, it's not on here. What we voted to reconsider? And that, reconsider is not, reconsideration is not on here. It says to approve a contract with Magnolia. And so they made a motion to reconsider, what do we reconsider?
Their contract with Magnolia.
No, you gotta, you gotta, you can't reconsider the contract. You gotta reconsider the vote that we took, you gotta come and take the vote away. You can't act like the move did not take place. That's what I'm telling y'all, we violating the law.
Okay.
She telling, listen, she's telling you wrong. You gotta deal with the vote that took place at the last meeting.
That's true.
That's the law, man, we voting out to approve the contract. So now you gotta vote to overturn the vote that you voted on. You can't even vote on the action that was done by the council.
I don't know how long we're gonna let Councilman Wells scream for this.
Okay, this is it. Come on.
I, I don't care about those feelings right now. What I'm saying, I'm trying to take my legality. So this is what needs to happen, okay? Because it's not an agenda item and we voted on that item, you cannot act like we didn't vote on the item.
Tell me you need Attorney.
And so the thing that just happened, she said act like y'all didn't vote.
No, she didn't say that.
And as you say, reconsider, what do we reconsider?
Okay.
We gotta reconsider the action that was taken. In the space that once you have voted on an action, you gotta overturn the vote that you did. And it has to, so what, what, what supposed to, we supposed to make a motion to add the reconsideration of the contracts to the agenda? That's what the item supposed to say.
Okay. Pam, what we do, we ask, we know, we know.
Can we get Attorney General's opinion on that one?
That's correct.
As, as a council, I know y'all may not wanna do it. Because I think she just told us about the, of, of open meeting law.
That's correct.
Can we request an Attorney General's opinion? And so Magnolia can't penalize us, and we get legal advice from Attorney General. Can we request an Attorney General's opinion on we can vote on an item that's not on the agenda and was not properly added?
Thank you.
Can you, can you do that? As a council, as a council?
We all ready.
Cause you, we did that with that, investigative audit.
All right. And now, do we just, oh, yes.
Mayor, I'm taking what you really say to do.
Pam.
You're procedurally able to discuss this contract, whether or not y'all want. If you're gonna vote on it or if you're gonna discuss it.
So did we add?
This is a discussion runs in meetings to vote.
Did we add reconsideration as an item? Yes or no? Did we add to reconsider the vote?
There was an affirmative vote to reconsider the contract.
But it's not on, you said approve a contract. See, it doesn't say reconsider. See, we gotta come back and reconsider the action that was taken. Now, Mayor, y'all gotta be careful. I know pressure comes when certain things happen, I understand pressure comes. But don't get yourself in trouble legally.
Pam.
Mayor, my, my advice has not changed. Y'all can discuss the contract, and you can determine whether or not you want to have a motion and second to affirmatively execute the contract. Or somebody could make a motion not to sign the contract.
Motion to, to affirm this.
Motion to affirm.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor?
No.
Put a second in.
Was it Scott?
Okay, we moved on.
Not in the road.
You, you.
In the road.
Road, they live.
And Mister, Mister Oden, all, make sure you make a note that the point of order was ignored.
Mister Scott, what's that?
Also, we voted on an item that was not properly added to the agenda.
Mister Scott, you said yes.
You gotta, you can't ask what, you said, ask what's.
I'm, I'm trying to see what he's.
Just ask how you vote there. Did you say?
Somebody can hear anything every councilman.
I want to get, I want to get.
You said yes, Ms. Houston?
Yes.
All right, Miss. You said no?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
And no.
No.
It passed. All right, number nine, approve a contract of, contract with Magnolia for service for sharing information and disconnect, reconnect the service.
But you give me some bad advice.
That is discussionable.
See, this is, I, I, my, my, my concern is still this, okay? This is the only item legally that we can discuss when it comes to those contracts. Because of fact that it was not voted upon. But I want you to be sure to put in the minutes that Attorney Gray said we can vote on an item that was not properly added to the agenda.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did, you said that she, that they made that motion.
Number nine. We're on number nine.
No, that's, no, uh, uh, no, no.
We're on number nine.
Okay. I, I, we did, we did on number nine. Before we go to number nine is, I made, I'm making a statement pertaining to number nine. This is the only item we legally are supposed to discuss this meeting tonight. Cause we didn't take no action on it due to a lack of second. But I do want to make sure that you put in there for number eight that Attorney Gray denied my point of order and told the matter to deny it. And then she also said we can vote on a motion to add an item to the agenda that was not properly added.
All right, we're on number nine.
You might have come first thing in the morning.
No, no, no. No. Go ahead, child, number nine.
Number nine. For the contract, our service sharing, not for much, you disconnect, just reconnect, they have a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, question?
So the reconnect fee was seventy-five dollars. So now, Magnolia was to increase it on their own, fifty dollars to disconnect, the fifty dollars to reconnect, that's all they know.
Can you explain?
Yeah, no, our reconnect fee stays at seventy-five dollars here, cause that's what's in the.
That's too bad.
That is not what was in that contract.
So the contract, that's money that we have to pay to Magnolia. But all we can charge the customers is seventy-five dollars, that's all we need for.
Miss Harris, the way that.
So basically, we're gonna be losing twenty-five dollars.
Unless you address your ordinance.
Yeah, unless we address.
To make it match. Which financially would be advisable.
No, financially wasn't. Advised was tell the city stop overlooking legal situations we can take advantage of. And then telling us to give away a whole lot of money. I have not seen one thing that you have advised the city to do that's gonna bring money to the city. I have not seen it.
So do Magnolia own a water company now?
No, it's still.
Is they running? Is anyone licensed to run it? Certified to run the water? Cause we still have the same water.
There's the state.
Mr. Good is a certified operator.
If Magnolia there, why Magnolia don't have a certified operator?
Magnolia is.
So how does the water get any better? Cause it's still the same.
Okay, that's your point. Let's go.
The motion was by Scott. He's the second.
Second, okay.
We got a question before we vote, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you have a question before you vote, sir? I mean, you trigger happy to move on.
No, I meant we've been talking this thirty minutes.
Even if it's an hour. So, first of all. I mean, I've never seen anything like this. I've never seen such incompetent. I've never seen such incompetent people in my life. Ho, 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 ho. Very disrespectful. I've never seen such incompetent people in my life.
I don't know.
He seems.
Will you have another question, ma'am?
First of all, I hadn't finished mine.
But he hadn't even acknowledged you, ma'am. See, what has to happen, ma'am? I told you several times. You gotta let people talk.
They do.
Without interrupting them. And even saying being incompetent does not mean. Just let them talk.
Yes, ma'am. Let him make his comment.
First of all, I'm not gonna tone what I have to say down. Because what we need is hard talk. And that's the reason we in the situation we in now. Because of the incompetence we have in our city. We have so many that think you know it and don't know it. You're not following the law. And you think, you have attorneys here that's been sitting here. They go over to the DA's office. And yeah, I'm saying it. And you'll have personal relationships. Enough is enough. I had a personal relationship with the former governor on last Saturday. And if the ex-governor talk about how incompetent the administration has been, that's a problem. And not only did he mention your name, Mr. Mayor, but he also mentioned your sister's name.
No, you're not gonna.
I'm telling you like it is. Whether you wanna hear it or not. If you put in the paper how we, we're failing city in our finances, et cetera. I never would've written that letter.
Thanks, thank you.
Sir, if you let me finish, please.
We don't have a second for number nine.
Mayor, he's got one minute and forty seconds left as long as he's not attacking.
I'm not attacking anyone. And I'm not attacking anyone. But I had, but you made the statement, I'm attacking someone. So let me speak of you.
Oh, 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 no.
Since we're talking about attacking people. I feel attacked by our city attorney.
No.
By the bad. I feel attacked by our city attorney. By the bad advice.
Mayor letting half his minute and forty seconds.
You had time to write that long letter, right? But I feel attacked by our, our city attorney for the bad advice that she's given to our council members. And we have one council member that voted to not have these rates on the last, the last session. Now, you come back, you gang up with your team and you come back. I mean, enough is enough. Enough is enough. What are you gonna do right by the citizens? Instead of taking your own personal gain and not listening to your constituents? Because they.
That's it. That's our time.
Yes, ma'am?
My thing is that.
You have thirty seconds.
You said that the disconnect, connect, whatever is seventy-five dollars. The reconnect fee is seventy-five dollars. How much, I know that after, do you know specifically what month they're gonna increase our rates like by fifteen, twenty dollars or something like that?
No, exactly. No, I don't know.
Cause I know that, you know, it was mentioned somewhere that we're gonna have a fifteen to twenty dollar increase. That's for the next four to five years.
Mayor, Mr. Wilson still has thirty seconds left.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I yield my time to the gentleman in the back. I have one question. You said, y'all said we don't own the water company? Okay, we own it? Magnolia is operating? Third party? So why aren't we getting any return in the money that's being collected? We should be able to recoup some of that money being as though the water company do belong to the people of the city. So we should be getting some kind of return on our investment.
Okay, ma'am, you wanna go ahead?
Now, we're on track here.
I wanna talk about some, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I wanna know how we can bill by, you know, with sewage. How y'all go by billing us?
Sewage, we can't because there's no.
But y'all not getting a data, so the information y'all leave.
That's what we're doing now.
So we shouldn't have a bill if y'all have the information here, right?
Yeah, and we're not, we're not getting.
You're not getting what, Mr. Mayor? No, you're not getting what for the information? Because this is beginning to be legal, man. This is beginning to be a legal issue. Because you guys are charging the sewer customers without the accurate information. And you have been doing that for several months. You can't do that. You can't do that. And now you claim that the city is such a crisis, which I don't believe at all. I think it's a scare tactic that you're using against the citizens. I know you're not, I know you're not selecting, I know you're collecting the garbage funds. You collect the garbage funds, but you're not, definitely not sending it over to the parish. Because the parish paid over two million dollars for those contracts. They have to pick up those garbage, that garbage. Now, if I'm wrong and you show me I'm wrong, I will never come back in this council chambers until I'm there.
Thank you.
I asked him if he proved, if he proved to me. If you prove to me that the, that the garbage, the garbage funds that you collect on a monthly basis from each citizen that you're sending those funds over to the parish. I will never come back in this council chamber until I'm there.
Why don't you ask someone?
Prove it to me.
Okay, my question is this. I just wanted for clarity, so it'll be on record. Okay, now with the, with Magnolia Water and with the state contract that we have since we went into receivership, what are we responsible, okay, what are we paying for as far as the plant?
You're talking about the water?
The water.
Water, that, that you send the bill to?
Okay, not the bill. I'm talking about like as far as the equipment, labor, that kind of stuff. What are we paying for?
Company's still paying there.
Okay, so we're paying for, I'm just saying, are we paying for like boosting stations?
Whatever they have to pay. That's good, that's good.
I think the answer to her question is, she's wondering where the revenues is going from the water plant. And that revenue is being used now to run the water. Like I think you said, I'm just, in the contract with the state, from the state, what are we, the citizens of Tallulah, of, yeah, what are we paying for? I mean, I know what we paying for them to repair the system, which includes replacing, or are we doing what parts?
Whatever needs we.
No, we're not, we're not paying for any repairs. So all of the revenue from water, okay, is being collected by Magnolia. They in turn are using all of that revenue to operate the plant, to pay for everything over there. The city of Tallulah, everything that's been done at the water plant, that one point two million dollars worth of work that's already been done, we have not paid for that. Gosep, well, Magnolia paid for it and they were reimbursed by Gosep. So we're not paying for that.
So what is happening? Can I speak? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So ma'am, can I speak? So now, we spent over a million dollars on December thirty-first in a meeting about parts that go to that plant. Have those parts that we spent, one point six million dollars? Have those parts been put on that plant yet?
Yes.
Those parts been there? How do we know that? So you get a file on it? Even though Magnolia's having all water operations? And you all said Magnolia was not communicating with us when it comes to none of the water?
Remember, Magnolia didn't come until in February or so.
And I know what I'm saying. And back in March and April, when I first started inquiring about those parts, you all said that they had not been ordered. So no parts was brought back into the city by January or February? None. Cause they said they had to order. Cause the company actually did the study on the plant. I played college football with the guy. Talked to him another weekend. So it's a lot that I know that's going on. That you all, that you all not telling the citizens. Cause with the sewer, see, the sewer one is not it. So who's gonna pay for the thirteen miles of pipe that all the bodies gonna put down? With the purchase that we're gonna do, body making. So when is that gonna happen? So when are we gonna be talking about that?
If the parts have been put down, I've been, I've been looking at this, this update that Magnolia Water Company has been, y'all been pushing out for Magnolia. I have not seen any parts. Neither have, neither have I seen any of those administrative order corrections that we supposed to be making. So if we collected six million dollars annually, am I correct, Mr.? Well, how much we collecting? Well, three point eight million dollars. So we collecting three point eight million dollars. And you need to tell me that those three point eight million dollars on the, on the items that we've been receiving thus far doesn't affect any of that. We don't have new clarifiers, we don't have new aerators, we don't have new distribution lines. We don't have any of those things. But we continue to be told by you guys that, oh, the water is clean, the water is clean. We have, I mentioned it here, liquid, liquid, uh, liquid lines. You putting the pad down, it costs pennies. What are they doing with? I read about it. And Mr. Odom, you told us in last meeting that you guys don't get a report on the finances for Magnolia. And I'm throwing off by that. I'm throwing off about why we as citizens. Mr. Odom, you said that two weeks ago. And you still haven't had gotten a report. And I need to know why, why Magnolia won't come and talk to us?
When we discussed the situation of them being a private company, might have something to do with it.
A private company, that doesn't mean anything.
I will check into that. I don't see anything wrong with it.
This is why, this is why we in a situation. I figured, I kept asking, I thank God for revealing stuff. See, the reason why we voted for receivership is because of Louis had revised statute forty colon five nine one. Number F. This is what they did to us. It states, notwithstanding any provision of laws in the contrary, no local government authority that operates a community water system that receives a grade of D or F shall expend any money raised through payments made by customers for access to water or from any other water system revenue for any item debt payment or public purpose other than the improvement or sustainability of the community water system. A violation of this subsection shall be grounds for civil action for court-appointed receivership in accordance with revised statute forty colon five point nine. The appointment of a fiscal administrator in accordance with revised statute thirty-nine thirteen fifty-one or for a court order to the mandatory safe water purchase from another system determined to be available by the department. So what happened?
Well, I think there's something else.
So what happened? When the legislative audit requested I find major funds, they saw where you all were transferring money. I could be wrong. From the water fund to pay other city operating expenses. And I know this is recently, cause it's in the audit, it's in the audit. It says the transfer, it's in the audit, it said money transfers. It say you transferring money from the water fund to the general fund. And it said anytime your system is a D or F, you cannot transfer those monies. I could be wrong. But when you see those transfers happening, and the mayor alluded to it in a letter that he wrote. Can you tell us how much it was, ma'am? I know. So in the letter that you wrote, you stated that due to the fact that we no longer have control over the water funds, we're not able to meet our obligations. And Mr. Odom alluded to that budget that he behaved. He said, when we start getting the water funds, they put us in a bind. So what happened is we violated law. Transfer water funds. We voted quickly to go to receivership. That's why our opinion changed about it. And the state is protecting, saving face by not saying what it really is. That's why we're not objecting to nothing that's being proposed. That's why we even violating open means laws to satisfy Magnolia.
Ma'am, can I speak second?
So now, what's gonna happen? So I listened to stuff. I'm waiting on the proposed water district. That's gonna come aboard, where it's gonna include Madison, which is, which is, uh, with Tensaw. With Body Makin' and Wounded Bay. I'm waiting for that to be there. And y'all watch, mark where I told you.
Okay, ma'am. Attorney, where we go now? Hold on this. Nope, we got to go.
Mayor, I'm just trying to get that clarity because later on, like he said, right now, what I've read in the governors, I mean, in that letter from the governor, whatever it is for the receivership, we had, they were gonna replace like something about the plant. What was that? Plant. Pump stations and a few other things. It never mentioned a thirteen mile pipe. Okay? And another thing we have to remember is that that's what we're supposed to pay for the Tallulah residents. Is for those items to repair our plant. Okay? Now, when it comes to that thirteen mile pipe, Central State's Water Resources, Walnut Bay, Tensaw Water District, and I'm not sure about Body Makin'. You know, they have their own partnership going on right there. And they are responsible for that. Now, it may benefit us, but guess what? We never signed a contract. Just remember that to go into, you know, that's what I'm just letting you know. So when it comes to having a pipe, that look to the citizens of Tallulah, we don't wanna be charged for thirteen miles of pipe. Okay, I'm just saying, or the record will be on record. So we are having written.
Last question before we vote. Mr. Odom. What is happening with the money that the citizens voted for a rate increase to go towards the water plant?
That's just what it did. It went towards the water plant. And here's something else.
Where was the money?
We've been talking about money, 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 nine. We're overlooking something very important. When we went into receivership for a month, we, there were no billions. We lost two hundred fifty thousand dollars, just bam, like that. And that hurts a little town. And it takes a while to try to catch up and make up to what you've lost.
That's true, ma'am. We gave a hundred thousand dollars for a park project. We added a hundred thousand dollars to a park project. We had a hundred thousand dollars to a street project. We had seven, we had spent seventy some thousand dollars. We added hundreds of thousand dollars in projects. Okay? So let's not talk about that when we added money to government money that gave to us free. So we gonna talk about losing. We gave a lot away and had an opportunity to get something back and we chose not to.
Uh, yes, how can we constantly make changes to something that is not ours? If it's not Magnolia, why they not here? But y'all are constantly making change and rearranging and adding and taking away. Why?
What do you mean taking away?
For what it actually taught us. How y'all constantly can do things without them being? If it's theirs and not ours. How can we constantly do a contract for something that's not ours?
She's asking why we never, Magnolia never comes to us. Why we voting on changes for them and they never come here to us and we can talk to them?
That's what you're asking? Next week?
Because Magnolia's mindset is this. We don't have to talk to Tallulah. Our relationship is with the state of Louisiana, so I'm not coming to say nothing to them.
But we need a receipt.
Even though Brad, as a matter of fact, it's been a hundred and twenty days. And they were supposed to present a plan of action for the water plant. We had a hundred and thirty-one days. We haven't seen no plan. According to that contract, it said within a hundred and twenty days, they supposed to produce a plan of action for our water plant. Is that not correct?
We have roll call things.
We're on number ten.
Are we on ten?
I'm sorry, I'm voting on number nine.
I have, I have two names, but I have Scott and Houston. For nine.
Okay, all the favorites they have, we have three people.
We're number nine.
I'm on number nine. Scott here, yes, right. Houston? Harris? Day?
Yes.
Who else?
No.
We're going to number ten. Set a special reading that we're gonna introduce. Ordinance to amend. Twenty-three, uh, please, twenty-three, twenty-four budget and ordinance to
Introduce. Introduce. Adoption. FY, this we gave twenty-five, twenty-six budgets.
Now, we gotta start explaining.
Now, this is my question, okay? Why are we introducing it again?
Cause he ran it in the paper the first time before he should have, and he ran it in the paper the second time before he should have.
Which means I said last other meeting that it was wrong. And see, this is what we gotta start doing. We gotta start, see, we asking, what can we do to make things better, right? You know what I told you? I said the first thing we gotta do is tell the people when we're wrong. We gotta admit that when we mess up. And we can't just try to cover our mess ups like we just did earlier.
That's one, but went back on the agenda.
So what we both say is because I, because I added before I supposed to. I'm trying to say a special meeting without saying we did wrong. I promise you, when I say something, I'm telling you what the law says. I, I promise you, when I say something, I'm telling you what the law says. And you say it's my opinion. And I'll be giving you the law. So the reason why we trying to set a special date, because you found out that what I said was right.
Actually, he was advised by me.
I understand, I understand. But, but I mentioned it to you first. So my concern, it's my concern. I, 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 I love Toluula, okay? And I wanna make sure that special interest doesn't derail Toluula. And, and, and that's what I'm starting to see. Because who is coming to the table to fight for Toluula? You wrote a letter to the governor, to the state representative, to the state senator, to, uh, Go-Selp, to attorney about people on the back roads. You drafted, you wrote that up. So, what I'm saying is this, we have a tendency of not following the law. See, we have a tendency of not following the law. And what we always say is we always done it like that. And the day I told y'all months ago, I said, "We gonna get to the end of the year, because we never see bills for payment." And I told his council, "Let's take action when we can see bills for payment." We're the only government entity that never see bills for payment. And we never even asked for them. So then the mayor has a letter written, that say we in financial distress. But now we finna come and amend the budget from the financial distress without give us adequate details on why we in trouble. And the council never asked questions as to mayor, what is happening with our money? Mr. Odom has been the clerk for almost how many years? And if our finances is out of whack like they are every year, anybody else will be fired. They'll be fired. And this thing is continuing. And the only thing that you all suggest, let's approve the contract from Magnolia to make money. Are we gonna cut any salaries in city hall? Are we gonna make any adjustments to the, uh, overtime that people allowed to get? Are we gonna make, what are, what are the steps are we gonna make to curtail our spending? Because we had the budget meeting, Mr. Odom presented nothing to us. We supposed to see a budget from last year, and the proposed one for this year to have a side by side comparison, never saw it. So we finna approve a budget, amend the budget, who helped you prepare that budget, Mr. Odom?
I do.
By yourself this whole time? Nobody work with you?
Well, I get, I talked to managers, the people that are gonna be spending money.
So why you never talk to me and Miss Harris again? Why you never contacted us to finish our meetings?
I contacted you.
When?
When you came to the committee.
No, it's like, when you never, when you came, you never had nothing for us. And you tried to house.
The first day, the second day is when I brought you all.
And you went back to the fact saying you didn't have all the stuff you need.
Yeah, and then when I came, I was gathering it up, and I said, "Look, you may tell them that I wasn't quite ready, if you'd like, because I wasn't ready." And then I read, I can't, then I got what I wanted, I brought it back in here, and then you said, "Look, why don't we just go, go and ha, and instead, invite the managers in and have one tomorrow," which I thought was a fine idea.
That was the first thing, that's why the second day, all the managers, I'm talking, all the managers was there. And you just was falling stomach with the papers. And we told Mr. Odom, we asked for all the funds. And you said.
I gave you everything except maybe some penny ante stuff, you know?
See, you said penny ante, but that's stuff we need to see, we're in a budget committee, we need to see everything. And you didn't bring it, so we said, "When you get everything together for us, bring it back." That's, because that's the meeting Mr. Scott came to, that he said the mayor and attorney told him to come to. Was gonna get us in trouble violating over meeting, I know you said, I know you said that they didn't tell you, but you did. So that's the meeting, so that's, I know y'all talking about opinion, y'all both saying the same thing. So, what I'm saying is, you proposed a budget that you never made with the committee. Because when we came, you never had nothing together. So we couldn't see nothing. And you asked, "What can we do to get this thing right?" You said, "What is gonna happen to our water plant?" I said, "Until y'all tell what's going on, we gonna lose it." And you have not presented any detail, you still have not called us here to meet on the budget.
Well, are you gonna chew my, you know, what, or we gonna get out of here?
I'm chewing till ain't there no more.
It's Houston.
I was just asking, do we have time for the budget committee to get together with Gerald before we have this, uh, introduce a special meeting?
So it's.
There's no law, but even says you have to have a budget committee.
But when you, and say you can have one, we voted on one, so since you voted on one. But you have to also, the reason why they advise y'all budget. See, when are we gonna get the, when are we gonna get all the financing? Don't overlook that. We still don't have the tax equities from Madison Point. When are we gonna get the monies that's being made off those tax credits? Those are the things, we need to have every dollar that city's supposed to have. No, no, when are we gonna get the tax equity reports?
She has to send the letter first.
And have to send in the whole month?
And, and there's reasons for that.
Okay, what are the reasons?
I'm researching something.
I thought you had a letter together?
I do have a draft letter, and I'm researching.
A draft?
Yeah, I told you that three times now.
No, you told me you had a letter.
Do we have time?
A draft letter completed.
I get, not these.
They were.
Do we have time to have another meeting for the budget committee to meet?
I, I think we're drifting. I don't think that probably the time would allow now, because we're drifting further and further away, so, from the beginning of the new year.
So, Ms. Houston, there would be time for another meeting, whichever, it would be late. There'll be, it'll be an audit finding, because it's going to be late, but I think it's gonna be late anyway. So, um, if, if the budget committee wanted to meet with Mr. Odom, um.
Anybody that wants to meet with me, I'll be happy to.
Well, see, this is the problem, this is the problem that we've been saying for the last couple of years. The budget is actually supposed to start the initial process like in January, I've been telling you for long this. In January, we always wait to June to throw a budget together, first we have to amend the.
Wrong, 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 wrong.
You just put on a tenth of the last week.
Just go ahead and say what you wanna say, you're not telling the truth.
So we're gonna always wait to June.
You gotta be kidding.
To present the budget.
I started it, I started in March. March first, I started.
You started, but without the committee.
Well, the committee can come anytime you want to, during the general process.
Again.
This is false.
We're supposed to have a committee starting, but I told you, it's supposed to start in January, the third quarter, what was the fourth quarter? To propose a budget and we make adjustments.
And you have to have a little information that you lived through to go back over and review, to know what to expect in, in the future. You know that, I'm not gonna do anything you don't know, so, don't make it sound like that I just threw something together, but I spent all, but now I spent on it. I'm working on weekends and everything else.
See. No, no, what, 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 this is, this is what I proposed, and I've proposed for long. See, it's hard to have a budget committee meeting when we don't see all the finances. We don't see all the expenditures. See, that's why I've been saying for long, we need to see bills for payment. The police jury, the school board, they present bills for payment to the board every time they have a meeting. Every time. And I even asked the council, I asked y'all, "Let's make a motion or ordinance to have the mayor present bills for payment." You all with me back there. So now, the budget committee can meet, but we don't know where money's going? No, I, I, listen, I don't, I don't, I'm talking some else right now. What I'm saying is, because we're in trouble financially according to your letter, it's hard to have a budget meeting when we don't know where all the expenses are going. And you just give us something, and I asked you, would you present bill? I'm not doing it, I ain't bringing no, I'm not doing it. God, doggy. I promise y'all, I'm gonna say you said that you did. And you said at the meeting, I ain't never doing it, and I said, "Council, do y'all wanna do it?" And all I want to say was with Harris. Because I asked those, I said, "Let me make the ordinance, let's do it." And he said, "He wasn't doing it, nobody making do it." We could say we make a motion in the meeting that the mayor brings us bills for payment every month. And we were not following, I asked to do it, we did not follow, Harris almost said something. And I said, "We gonna come at the end of the year, and how we gotta amend the budget," and Mr. Odom said, "You know, we probably gonna do that." But everybody show bills for payment except you. And so that's why that sure ain't the only, you pay somebody a couple thousand dollars to move a tree out of here. You say, "Well, the city workers can't get hurt moving the tree." So you spending the money that, I don't know, the tree removals in our budget, I ain't never seen it. But there's certain things we paid that we don't talk about by the council. But the police jury, they show bills for payment, the school board show bills for payment, I can see where Richmond show bills for payment, Mound show bills for payment. Everybody show bills for payment but the city's. And then we gonna vote to amend the budget, not knowing where none of this money's going. We vote to approve a contract, Justin Magnolia said we need to do, and attorney said, "I advise y'all to pass it." I vote that we won't have a special meeting, till we get all our finances laid out in front of us. You can't talk about a budget if you don't have the money in front of you. And that letter needs to go out ASAP, we didn't have it for a whole month now. You come back with a quick answer when it comes to stuff with that water project. You don't delay that.
Do we ask for a motion on number twelve?
I make a motion that we table the special meeting until we get to talk about finances, and the letter from the attorney be sent to Magna- Madison Point. I make a motion that we table a special meeting, don't, don't set a date, until we get the finances.
Ms. Harris seconded that motion.
What motion she said? To take.
To take the second here.
Who running the meeting, Ms. Louis?
I make a motion that we table setting a date until we get the, all the city finances, and the attorney sends a, a certified letter to Madison Point and care of Archie Jones with the tax credit from the six years.
And if there's a second.
But no, we already told you that a couple, a meeting, something, several minutes ago.
So we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
I will see me as a best.
All right, this is for, uh, number eleven.
Motion to table.
Motion to table until all the finances are made up.
On getting that information.
We'll do it, we'll do a ten day demand letter.
Ten day?
Ten day.
Well, actually, what you're talking about comes out in public hearing. Okay, uh, Scott?
Yes, Scott said yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes. I have a question, I, I got a question. What is the current status of the water plant rehabilitation project? And is it still called the water rehabilitation plant project? Or has it changed to the water improvement project? And what is the status of all of our funding in regards to the water plant? So we don't have, so we don't have, we can't answer the question about the funding? You sent us an email about it? So do we have all of our fifteen million that we, as others have told us? I can't even talk to him, I want to keep doing what he's saying. Do we still have all of our funds that was allocated to us to rebuild our plant, fifteen year?
Got some hand raised in the back.
Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Sheriff, hold on a minute, I wanted to ask about the funding first, I wanna get with the man. I wanna know, do we still have all of our funding for the water plant?
We have not received anything from water sector or USDA saying that the funds that were allocated for Toluula have been unallocated or, or anything else. We have not received anything from either one of those sources.
So have we received any communication saying we lost funding?
That we lost funding?
That there was some funding was decommitted from our water plant project.
Not that we've got from USDA or from water sector.
Was there any communication that indicated we lost our funding?
Nobody else can tell us we lost the funding, except the funding agents.
I said, "Have we received any communication?"
That we lost the funding?
From anyone, that the funding's supposed to have been lost?
No, no. We got the email from, what's the, the name of the company, um, Monera, or whoever that is, that.
Who they represent?
They felt that the USDA funding wouldn't be able to be used. But the answer to your question is, we have not received anything from water sector or from USDA saying that the funds allocated for Toluula have been de-allocated, we have not. As far as we're concerned, we still have all of those monies.
Okay, so now, do we still, are those funds still allocated to the water plant rehabilitation project?
So the name of our project was the Toluula Water Plant Rehabilitation Project, that has not changed.
It has not?
Our project never changed.
So have a motion cleared?
The thing is that I'm, I'm trying to work with one of the contractors, with the USDA, and he asked me, and he said, "Do we have a strategic plan for Toluula?"
So, come to us and talk to us, you know, somebody.
Do we have a strategic plan, uh, mayor? You don't have a strategic plan? I'm something written, because that's something that has to be sent in with our grants and something else that, you know, we need.
Get him, did you, get the phone, this guy, get phones, oh, you know, whatever, I'll talk to him.
No, no, what she's asking is, do we have a written detailed plan that says in five years, the city's gonna do this? In ten years, we're gonna do this? In fifteen years, we're gonna do it, that's strategic, I mean, you got a strategy for how you know. So do, she's asking, do we have a written, detailed, strategic plan about the growth and development of Toluula?
We have the company here, or have they're doing, how you're gonna do indoor rehab, what, what we have. But we don't have the expect, well, you start saying, um, what, to five years or something like that? But we don't, we don't have it exactly.
The other question was, do we, okay, since we've gone into receivership, does that hinder the community development? Uh, is that like a moratorium or a hole that's placed on, um, you know, properties? You know, trying to make sure that we could build new homes or do any type of renovations that require like tap water? Since they're doing the study over there with, uh, I mean, redoing the plant? Is there a hole or moratorium on any of the development?
Ma'am, are you gonna address the letter that you, uh, posted on social media? Are you gonna talk to us about that letter? Are we gonna, we gonna deal with that letter, because then when I was doing, I asked some questions about that. So we not gonna discuss what's in the letter? Because I know it's geared toward the contract being addressed, I know that was about it.
Hey, everybody, it's gonna be short this week, thank y'all for my award.
No, I'm asking, are you gonna address the letter that you put out? Oh, was that just about this contract? Because you put it out there, so we should discuss it in the meeting, everybody, what you're saying in the meeting? Because the community need to hear you talk about this. We did everything, put it in letters, we never talked about anything.
Mr. Mayor, have you had any, uh, communication with the governor?
I have not.
About our water?
Yeah, I have not directed, no.
So you, you don't, you don't, you don't have, y'all don't have any communication at all? When was the last time you talked to the governor's office? So the, the governor. So have y'all, have y'all had any, have you had any communication with the governor's staff? With its administration period? So have you, have you had any communication with the Department of Health and�owers? So if there's no communication on the city level.
So if there's no communication on the city level, uh, about any communication about our water plant and the rehab stage, etc.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of that.
And so what, what, can you inform us about that, that rehab stage?
Where we off?
Where, where we off from rehabbing the water plant?
I can't get your email. I think it's specific, but I.
Just give me, it doesn't have to be specific. Just give me what.
The latest is on the, the elevator train. That's the, that's the latest that we done.
They cleaned a lot of tree lines and been putting fence up.
Well, that's like, that is, the top was fixed and getting the, uh, lime out of it. That's the latest.
So that, that's, that's those are the only updates that you, that you got? So where, where are we? Have, have we received a grade on, on our water? Have, have we recently received a grade on water? The reason I ask because, you know, every time we talk about water, you, you, you always say that the water is drinkable. It's, 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 it's good. So, and I beg to differ, but here and there, um, I, I don't see how we run in our city and our utility and don't, regardless if we under, um, state of emergency or not, you are still in control of your water plant. I mean, we just under state of emergency that has a management company that manage our, our water system. So, I mean, them just, every, every other week, they, they give us a little update on little, little nuggets that they doing, which I don't, I can't see how they improving the water quality.
A lot of people say it does. And we have some, some don't and some do.
You know, there, there are a lot of people that, you know, and, and I'm gonna put this very frank, in our communities, uh, there, there, we have unclean water. We have unclean water, and that's, that's my opinion. I stand on it strongly.
That's not no opinion.
So, uh, and I say in our community, because most, because most, most people in the African-American community, and we are over seventy percent African-American in the city, that we don't, they don't have, we don't have the funds to go and get, um, those filtration systems at sixty-five hundred dollars plus. We don't, we don't have those types, that, that type of money. You understand what I'm saying? So those that, those that have those filter systems, of course they're getting really good quality water, you know? It's very few of us that, that have those. No, it's a bunch. It's a bunch. I, I know for a fact it's a bunch because the same company that, that put them in, I, there, there's more than a few. It's, 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 it's hundreds here in the city that has those filtration systems, including the Scott. So, um, and that's why we, 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 we gotta be very careful on who has these systems and who don't have these systems. And who's holding our, um, our system hostage and who's really for our system. You know, most of you guys that sit on the council don't have this system. But we have, we have very few that don't. Mr. Scott has one.
I don't have one.
You might, I'm not saying you do, Mr. Mayor, but I know Mr. Scott has one.
You go to the leg, buddy.
You gonna tell him to hit, hit me in the head? I got something I need to say.
Like Mr. Wilson was just saying about the system, everybody don't have a system. Now, I had my wife to send me this a few minutes ago. This is in my master bathroom in my house. That's my water in the bath too. Everybody ain't got no good water, so I ain't nothin' saying about the water grade. That water is filthy. It ain't fitting the bath. So ain't no need for you sitting up here trying to make, pretend that everybody got good water or whatever, because my water's not good. And I'm not pleased about it because this is something that's been going on for years. It ain't just started a couple of months ago or a couple of days ago. We shouldn't have to pay for something like this that we ain't doing no good with. You ain't doing no good with this. It ain't fitting to do nothing with.
This, this, this is the concerning thing about, you know, um, we, we, you know, you wrote a letter to talk about the city finances. You haven't addressed that yet. And you started trying to leave. We, we, we need to tell the people about what's really going on. So if the city is in trouble financially, you need to tell the citizens that, not just write a letter. I don't know if you wrote or who wrote it. You need to tell the citizens what is going on. Because for all the humans, the owner said, we, we hold schedule, everything is looking good. We looking good.
I did not. I did not. I did not.
I guess I be hearing things, man. So, so now, so then, at the end of the year, because, because now we put these contracts on there, you write a letter on the table. And, and if the stuff was bad last month, why didn't you write that letter last month when it got bad? Why you wait till the day we come in and then you end the letter by saying you want us to, uh, come in and, uh, vote, and also urging the city council to revisit the Magnolia contracts and approve them? So the letter ain't about the city finances. It was about making sure those contracts get approved. So you put the letter out there to act like we in such despair. To come back and illegally add an item to the agenda to vote on and get the contracts passed. And that, that, that's disheartening with the shoulder, how you feel about the citizens. You feel like, I don't know, who told you, they told you, they told you something, they told you, they told you. Well, man, let's write a letter before the meeting to tell the citizens that we in financial distress. And then, cause the council, want the council revisit the contracts. This whole letter was about those two contracts. That's what it's all about. About the two contracts. And then we go through the process.
So, so if we go, if we go into contract with them, can we get out of it? Is it, uh, a permanent contract?
You tell you something. They're not going through the process, I feel, of doing all this little temporary action. Because when we, without legal advice, it's telling us to sign these contracts. And add an item to the agenda.
Wait, wait, Mr. Neil, you had a question about the timing of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the way those contracts are structured, they're, they're tied to the thirty day notice provision. And the state could give Magnolia or Magnolia could give the state the time to make those contracts. So upon thirty days notice by either one of those parties, their relationship with the state would end thirty days later and therefore so would their relationship with us, because they would no longer be operating the water company under a state of emergency. And so therefore would no longer be in a contractual relationship with us. So the city would, would have to resume those services at that time or have somebody else provide it.
So is Tulum, Tulum can't control our own, we can't control our own water company?
What do you mean?
We can't, we can't control our money. If, if, if we had a, a problem with spending and money coming up missing, is that the reason why Magnolia stepped in?
So, no, whenever you're under a state of emergency or even under receivership, there is a statutory requirement, and I do not have the statute with me, but I can get it. It requires that when those funds are collected, that they have to stay with the water fund. So they couldn't be deposited into the general fund when you're under a state of emergency or.
We could have used that water and, and not put the water in general fund and just collect it with the water company. But when it, when they started putting the water into general fund, that's when it became a problem. Then with the, cause they were paying salaries and everything else out the water fund. That's why we having a problem with.
No, sir. The ba, the basis of the receivership, if you'll go back and look at the statute, when that petition was filed, was specifically based off of our failing water grade, just like the state of emergency was.
Still failing now.
So, yes, that was the ba, well, and I can't tell you what the water grade is at the moment. I believe you can only grade annually. And, and look, to anybody that's, that's suffering with water quality, I, I do not question or doubt the veracity of that. I will tell you that if you are having issues, please, and I, and I know it may seem tedious because you've been having those issues for a long time, but please continue to report them so they can make sure an auto flush in your neighborhood. Just please continue to do that because that, that creates a record for you and, and for the city.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, where, where has the blueprints that Magna, that we paid them nine hundred, engineering work? That we paid them nine hundred eighty dollars? Have we got a copy of, uh, those blueprints? Where is it? What if we can get, we don't have it? What, what is it? And I'm, I'm like, I like to see them. I, I like to see them. Can we get those today?
I can let you have, look at it.
I do the night tonight?
No, I'll find it, come back, maybe Friday.
Let, let me, I, I need to address, I need to address an issue with the, with the complete, with. I need to, I need to address an issue with the complete council. Um, our public safety, uh, we, we have a major issue on our streets, council, council member. Uh, we have an individual that, that constantly harassing our citizens. Uh, and it, it's begin to be a problem. Uh, we, we had an incident on, on last, last Friday, or it was, where an individual got pulled over for a, a traffic violation. And it escalated into something that, that shouldn't have been escalated to, saying resisting arrest. Uh, to my understanding, that the city of Tulum does not have body cams, but I see the same officer today with a body cam on, and I'm not sure if he's on duty with the city of Tulum. But that, this has to stop. So the city needs to invest, uh, invest some type of funds. You come on if you like.
I'm not, I'm not.
I just seen my peripheral bits. So, uh, the, the city, the city needs to invest into body cams. So the in, these individuals won't be attacked, feel threatened. Even when I went to bail the individual out, I'm sitting in a common area asking questions, how much to bail? How much is the bail? The individual got very aggressive with me, uh, saying, get out, get out. And, and then the, uh, the, the, the person that was arrested said he had to use the restroom. So, but he came out and threatened me like he was gonna arrest me. So I had to call the sheriff department because I already have a legal issue with the police department. So therefore, I wanted. Therefore, I, I, so therefore, um, I called the sheriff department. So the sheriff came over and by the time they called, the, uh, I guess the chief staff called him. So the chief, the chief came and de-escalated the, the, the situation, uh, as he should have. But this officer has been pulling people over, has been going on public property, uh, harassing individuals, uh, grown people about curfew, someone standing outside of their home. Just outside their home, in their car, in front of their home. And he was threatened to be arrested. I've seen, I've talked to many people, even the, these individuals that own Queen Mama. Uh, one of those individuals was, was arrested and feel harassed. I looked at the video on, on their camera. This is a serious issue, and I'm asking the council to please, in the next budget, which Odom needs to do this immediately, to put body cams for these officers. So we won't end up in some type of legal issue, because that's a major problem. A major, major problem. Because if you, you arresting someone and you accusing them for resisting arrest and that person hasn't done, that issue, that's a major issue. That, that, that's, that's a problem. So we, we need to start doing these types of things and making our city better and our, our, our public safety better. For all citizens, not just one citizen, but for all.
Chief, you got a response?
I respond to that if you, you got a moment to. I mean, first of all, when he stopped the individual, the individual refused to give him this information. And by law, since y'all say y'all in the law, that's a sign of resistance. That's a form of resistance. I can show it to you in the statute. I mean, that's what it was. That's why he came to jail. He refused to give the man this information. And by, by state law, it's, it's refusing. That's just resisting. And I don't care what you're saying, how you say it. And when you came up there, my, my, my call was that you was aggressive with him. I don't know I wasn't there.
You were aggressive what?
You was aggressive with the officer.
Well, I got.
He has, he have a right to. He have a right.
I got my own camera.
That's fine. He have a right to ask you to leave.
Just like he lied on me in his report that I.
Hey, that's, that's, we'll deal with that in the court. We'll deal with that in the city. We don't ever let it switch this.
You don't want to hear about it.
We will, we will.